For communication followed by president of our country. Mr. Benham.
Father God, thank you for today. Thank you for all the many blessings that you give us, Lord. Thank you that we live in a free country and we can assemble together and that we get to represent for the citizens. Please help us to make decisions that are in the best interest of the citizens of Winter Garden and watch over our first responders and our staff. In Jesus' name I pray.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I'd like to welcome all here this evening and restart a new year. First on the, again this evening is approval of our minutes on December fourteenth. They have been distributed. Are there any additional solutions or corrections? Hearing none, we need a motion. So moved, we have a motion to approve, we have a second.
Second.
We have a motion, we have a second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. Motion carried unanimously. First reading of public hearing, pose ordinance, ordinance twenty-four dash oh eight.
Yes, ordinance twenty-four dash zero eight and ordinance of the city of Winter Garden Florida, amending ordinance twenty-three dash twenty-five, city of winter garden fiscal year twenty twenty-three through twenty twenty-four budget to carry forward prior year appropriations, providing for severability and an effective date.
Thank you. Yes, ma'am.
Good evening, Mayor Commissioners. This ordinance carried for the projects that were budgeted for last fiscal year that weren't complete. Exhibit one lists some projects that we'd like to carry for and I'm happy to answer the questions if we have them.
Questions from the commission. All right, hearing none, this is a public hearing. We will open the public hearing if anyone wishes to speak. You can come up and give an address, please.
I need. Just for this item.
Oh, not this, okay.
Okay. Okay. If not, then we will close the public hearing and we need a motion.
Motion to approve ordinance twenty-four zero eight with a second reading of public hearing on January twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-four.
Okay, do we have a second? We have a motion and we have a second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed, motion carried unanimously. Thank you. Next one, just second reading of public hearing, pose ordinances, ordinance twenty-four dash oh one.
Yes, sir, ordinance twenty-four dash zero one, ordinance of the city commission of the city of Winter Garden Florida, dedicating a portion of the platte dedicated utility and drainage easement over a portion of lots thirteen and fourteen of Winter Garden Commerce Center Phase One. According to the platte, they're out as recorded in platte seventy-two, page one three-three and one three-four of the public records of Orange County located at six eight zero and six nine zero Garden Commerce Parkway owned by IBI Properties LLC. As more particularly described here, it's provided for an effective date and according.
Thank you. Yes, ma'am.
Good evening, Mayor Commissioners. Uh, this is a request for approval of easement vacation for the subject property located at six eighty and six ninety Garden Commerce Parkway. The property is currently vacant and the applicant is requesting to vacate a portion of their site interior drainage and utility easements to develop the two parcels as one combined property with a commercial warehouse and office. The site plan for the property was approved by the city commission at the April thirteenth, twenty twenty-three agenda and with that staff has reviewed the application and recommends approval and adoption of ordinance twenty-four dash zero one. We have to answer any questions.
Questions from the commission.
Are they piping that ditch now with that drainage easement or?
They're, they're building over it, so.
Well, it's a drainage easement.
It's a drainage easement, correct? Yes.
So what pathway is still piped?
There's no pipes currently in, in that, in that area.
What has the drainage? It's being altered to, to the south.
Yeah, there's a, there's a master stormwater plan as part of that development and so all of that stormwater has been calculated and designed.
I thought that part of the development, I got you. Okay, understood, thank you.
Any other questions? Once again, this is a public hearing. We will open the public hearing if anyone wishes to speak. Saying none, we will close the public hearing and we need a motion.
Make a motion, approve ordinance twenty-four dash zero one, South American Nation.
Okay, do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion, we have a second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed, motion carries unanimously. Before that show five, twenty-four dash oh six and twenty-four dash oh seven.
Yes, sir, ordinance twenty-four dash zero five and ordinance of the city of Winter Garden Florida, providing for the annexation of certain additional lands generally described as approximately one point five eight plus minus acres located at nine nine five Tullerville School Road west of West Plant Street, south of Tullerville School Road, east of Tullerville School Road and north of Brick Road into the city of Winter Garden Florida, redefining the city boundaries to give the city jurisdiction over set property, providing for severability, providing, providing for an effective date. And ordinance twenty-four dash zero six and ordinance of the city of Winter Garden Florida, amending future land use map of the Winter Garden Comprehensive Plan by changing the land use designation of real property generally described as approximately one point five eight plus minus acres located at nine nine five Tullerville School Road west of West Plant Street, south of Tullerville School Road, east of Tullerville School Road and north of Brick Road from Orange County Low Density Residential to City Low Density Residential, providing for severability, providing for an effective date. And ordinance twenty-four dash zero seven, an ordinance of the city of Winter Garden Florida, rezoning approximately one point five eight plus minus acres located at nine nine five Tullerville School Road west of West Plant Street, south of Tullerville School Road, east of Tullerville School Road and north of Brick Road from Orange County A dash one Citrus Rural District to City R dash one Single Family Residential District, providing for severability, providing for an effective date.
Thank you. Yes, ma'am.
Thank you, Kirk. Your voice sounds better, so.
Yeah.
Uh, this is a request for annexation of property located at nine ninety-five Tullerville School Road. This property is one point five eight acres in size and is owned A one Citrus Rural District in Orange County. The applicant is requesting annexation of the city amendment to future land use map to designate this property as low density residential and rezoning the property to R one Single Family District. Staff has reviewed the application and recommends approval and adoption of ordinances twenty-four dash oh five, six and seven.
Questions from the commission. Just like the welcome board, what asks us? Good. Once again, this is a public hearing. We will open a public hearing if anyone wishes to speak. Saying none, we will close the public hearing and we need a motion.
Motion to welcome our new neighbors and approve ordinance twenty-four zero five, twenty-four zero six and twenty-four zero seven.
Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and we have a second. All in favor signify by saying aye. Aye opposed, motion carried unanimously. Next, we have ordinance twenty-four oh two, twenty-four dash oh three and twenty-four dash oh four.
Yes, sir, ordinance twenty-four dash zero two and ordinance of the city of Winter Garden Florida, providing for the annexation of certain additional lands generally described as approximately zero point five four plus minus acres located at nine eight five Tullerville School Road west of West Plant Street, south of Tullerville School Road, east of Tullerville School Road and north of Brick Road into the city of Winter Garden Florida, redefining the city boundaries to give the city jurisdiction over set property, providing for severability, providing for an effective date. And ordinance twenty-four dash zero three, an ordinance of the city of Winter Garden Florida, amending future land use map of the Winter Garden Comprehensive Plan by changing the land use designation of real property generally described as approximately zero point five four plus minus acres located at nine eight five Tullerville School Road west of West Plant Street, south of Tullerville School Road, east of Tullerville School Road and north of Brick Road from Orange County Low Density Residential to City Low Density Residential, providing for severability, providing for an effective date. And ordinance twenty-four dash zero four, an ordinance of the city of Winter Garden Florida, rezoning approximately zero point five four plus minus acres located at nine eight five Tullerville School Road west of, West Plant Street, south of Tullerville School Road, east of Tullerville School Road and north of Brick Road from Orange County A dash one Citrus Rural District to City R dash one Single Family Residential District, providing for severability, providing for an effective date.
Thank you, yes, sir. Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. This is a request for annexation for a property located at nine eighty-five Tullerville School Road. This property is point five four acres in size, is owned A one Citrus Rural District in Orange County. The applicant is requesting annexation amendment to the future land use to designate this as low density residential and rezoning to R one Single Family Residential District. Staff has reviewed the application and recommends approval and adoption of ordinances twenty-four dash oh two, oh three and oh four.
Any other questions from the commission? This is a public hearing. We will open a public hearing if anyone wishes to speak. Saying none, we will close the public hearing and we need a motion.
Motion to approve ordinance twenty-four zero two, zero three and zero four.
Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion, we have a second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. Motion carried unanimously. Resolution twenty-four dash oh two.
Yes, sir, resolution twenty-four dash zero two, a resolution of the city commission of the city of Winter Garden Florida, adopting a vision zero policy providing for conflict severability and an effective date.
Thank you. Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. The city of Winter Garden is participating in a coordinated planning effort with local agencies called Vision Zero. This effort will result in a comprehensive Vision Zero Safety Action Plan for the city that will identify opportunities to change roadway designs, support educational needs and outline enforcement strategies to promote the goal of achieving zero traffic fatalities and a reduction in serious traffic injuries by the year twenty forty. The proposed resolution confirms that the city of Winter Garden will adopt Vision Zero as a policy for road and traffic safety and will continue to work towards creating and adopting a Vision Zero uh action plan. And so with that, staff recommends approval of resolution, of resolution twenty-four dash zero two. We have to answer questions.
Questions from the commission. What about the county roads and state roads? Are, is a county looking at doing this also?
Yeah, all, all of our neighboring jurisdictions, I, I think all of the jurisdictions and Orange County, um, they're all participating as well as most of the jurisdictions in Seminole County, Osceola County. So this is a major regional effort.
Because it needs to be for this to be effective. Questions from the commission. Hey, we need a motion. Move to approve. Okay, move to approve resolution twenty-four oh two, we have a second. We have a second?
Yes.
I'm sorry, we have a second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed, motion carried unanimously. Resolution twenty-four oh three.
Yes, sir, resolution twenty-four dash zero three, a resolution of the city commission of the city of Winter Garden Florida, approving an inventory list of municipally owned property that is appropriate for use as affordable housing pursuant to section one six six point zero four five one Florida statutes, providing for conflicts, severability and an effective date.
Thank you. Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. The Florida statutes require that municipalities prepare an inventory list of all real property within its jurisdiction to which the city holds a simple title that is appropriate for use as affordable housing. City staff has reviewed the current inventory of city owned properties and has determined that we do not currently have any property that is appropriate for use as affordable housing at this time. Uh, this analysis needs to be updated periodically and the city has the ability to amend this if we acquire additional properties that are deemed suitable for affordable housing. So with that, staff recommends approval of resolution twenty-four dash super three.
How often does it uh need to be updated for the state?
The state requires every three years.
Every three years? And it has to meet all of their requirements, assuming be within certain distance of hospitals and schools or shopping or?
So in this particular case, uh, the state doesn't really give any parameters as to why one would deem a property, um, you know, suitable for affordable housing. So it's really up to the jurisdiction to make that determination based on their criteria. So it could be, you know, distance to hospitals, road networks, et cetera.
Right, okay.
This doesn't apply to lots that we purchased, you know, to do affordable housing. This is surplus property that's been used by the municipality.
Yeah, typically, uh, developers or, or people who've developed it privately will use that as, you know, kind of a guidepost to, you know, purchase city property from, from the city. So this wouldn't affect our, our projects, yeah.
Thank you. An example would be the uh eight forty-eight lot or more closely the town, the, the rainbow lot. It's currently being used as a parking lot and so it does a lot of.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions? We go to approve resolution twenty-four oh three. We have a second.
Second.
Motion is second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed, motion carried unanimously. Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Recommendation to approve purchase order for thirty kilowatt generator. Yes, sir.
Good evening, Mayor Commissioners. Um, this is a request to purchase permanent generator for lift station twenty-five. Lift station twenty-five is located at the north end of Park Avenue, right directly adjacent to Lake Poppa. Staff is working to get lifts there, all of the lift stations covered by generators, but we feel that this one's very important to us due to its location by the lake and we would recommend approval of the purchase order for the thirty kilowatt generator from Trevenance Power Corporation for sixty-two thousand, six hundred and thirty-three dollars. We have to answer any questions.
Any questions?
No, but, and I was gonna leave this for comments, but since we're already at lift station twenty-five, we'll just briefly mention this, that a couple of weeks ago, uh, we did have an incident where, uh, we had a sewage blockage that affected a community and I contacted the city manager who, uh, literally in ten minutes, Director Pash, Mr. Monahan were on site, so were all the sanitation crews fixing this. Twenty-five got tripped off because of the flood of poo that officially broke through there and just their immediate response to that was, was commendable. It, it likely saved many homes from, from being flooded with sewage and, uh, and having a significant spill into our lake. So, uh, I just want to thank you for that as well as go ahead and I'll make uh the motion to add the generator to that station now. So that's my motion.
Okay, we have a motion to approve and we have a second.
Second.
We have a motion, second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed, motion carries unanimously.
Nice job, sir. Thank you.
Recommendation to approve joint projects agreement for utility lines construction between Orange County and the city.
Yes, sir.
Good evening, Mayor Commissioners. Uh, the city of Winter Garden requests to enter a joint project agreement with Orange County to construct the city potable water mains in conjunction with the county stormwater improvement project in East Winter Garden. This agreement would allow the city to use the contractor selected by Orange County to construct the potable water mains and the storm drainage that the, the county is adding. This project is anticipated to be bid in April of twenty twenty-four. With that, staff recommend entering into the joint project agreement between Orange County and the city of Winter Garden. We have to answer any questions.
Any questions? Need a motion, Mark. I move to approve. That's fine, I'm waiting for Mark to make a motion. It is something we need to get started and get done. We have a motion to approve.
Second.
Second. Motion is second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed, motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Recommendation to approve site plan for fourteen thirty to thirty West Colonial Drive. Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. This is a request for site plan approval for a property located at fourteen two thirty West Colonial Drive. The applicant is proposing to develop a point eight one acre property with a five thousand nine hundred and ninety-six square foot single story office building with associated parking. This lot is the westernmost property in the West Market Plan to Commercial Development. Staff has reviewed the application and recommends approval of the site plan. We have to answer any questions.
Questions from the commission.
Mayor, I'm gonna recuse myself from this. I don't think I need to have sold this property, but it was in my possession at one time. So I think just in abundance of caution, I'll recuse.
Okay. Very good, sir. Any questions from anyone? Do we need a motion?
Motion to approve of site plan for one four two three zero West Colonial Drive.
Okay, do we have a second?
Subject conditions, sir.
We have a second. We have a second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed, motion carried unanimously. Recommendation to approve site plan for Stony Brook West Parkway.
Thank you. This is a request for site plan approval of a property located at Stony Brook West Parkway. The applicant, the applicant is proposing to build thirteen commercial buildings that will, that will house office and retail uses. The project will include parking, stormwater pond and enhanced landscaping. The property was recently rezoned PCD in September of last year. Um, and I know there will be questions about those eight roadway items that we discussed in the PCD hearing, but we want to make clear that this approval is only for the proposed onsite construction. The roadway design is being, is still being finalized and the cost share agreements are still being negotiated between the applicant and the city. Uh, there is a staff condition of approval that a developer's agreement that lays out all of these terms would be finalized at a later date and then brought before the city commission for approval. So with that, staff has reviewed the application and recommends approval of the site plan. We have to answer any questions.
Questions from the commission. So we got this trick and just in this recommendation action?
Yeah.
Yeah, probably just a hair. There's, there's no gas station.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure. And no car wash.
No car wash, no gas station.
I wanted to make sure while we're moving on projects. We might need another car wash. Okay, any questions from commission? All in favor, we need a motion.
Move to approve the site plan approval for Stony Brook Exchange, subject to conditions.
Okay, do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion, we have a second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed, motion carried unanimously. Recommendation to approve site plan for four twenty-six West Plant Street. Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. This is a request for site plan approval for a property located at four twenty-six West Plant Street, which is the home of the Perkett Cam Brewery and Plant Street Market. Uh, the applicant is proposing to expand the Perkett Cam, which includes bricking in an existing metal cooler and building an addition on the south side of the property that's adjacent to West Smith Street. Building addition would be five hundred and twenty-six square feet in size and include a walk-up order window for drink service. The project also includes a new fenced-in patio area for seating covered by a lowered metal shade structure. Uh, this project has received architecture review approval and with that, staff has reviewed the application and recommends approval of the site plan. We have to answer any questions.
Questions from the commission.
This lot we did, um, make it to where the trucks come in and, and block the ingress entrance. That's great.
Yeah, that was a big point of discussion during this process is how, how deliveries will be made. And so we had them do a series of auto turn analysis, analyses and, uh, out of all the options, that was definitely the, the least impactful to, you know, the surrounding businesses and the streets, so we're more happy with that plan.
Is the park that's gonna be closed in, is it behind the current fence where the picnic tables and you always see families? So it's not cutting that out, so it's closing behind that.
Yes.
The window is undercover and it's like the window that's on the, uh, east side of the building.
Yeah, exactly, yeah. And no part of that existing artificial turf area where the kids play are impacted and they're, and they're saving that existing overhang too in that area.
Yeah, that's, okay, that's from next one, thank you. Any other questions from the commission? We need a motion.
Make a motion to approve the site plan for four twenty-six West Plant Street.
Okay, do we have a second? We have a second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed, motion carries unanimously. Recommendation to approve the binding lot combination agreement for six eighty and six ninety Garden Commerce Parkway.
Thank you. This is a request for approval of a binding lot combination agreement for two properties located at six eighty and six ninety Garden Commerce Parkway. This is the same property that was received that easement vacation approval earlier in this agenda. Uh, binding these lots into a single one point nine four acre property will allow the applicant to develop a new twenty-nine thousand eight hundred and two square foot office warehouse. The applicant received site plan approval from commission in April and so with that, we have to approve of the binding law combination agreement.
Questions? Need a motion?
Move to approve the binding lot combination agreement for those two lots, ma'am.
Okay, we have a second.
Second.
We have a motion, we have a second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed, motion carried unanimously. Recommendation to approve binding law combination agreement for thirty-five, uh, forty-one West Morgan Street and nine sixty-five, nine eighty-one and nine ninety-five Vinland Road.
Thank you. This is a request for approval of a binding law combination agreement for those five properties, uh, thirty-five and forty-one West Morgan and nine sixty-five, nine eighty-one and nine ninety-five Vinland Road. Uh, binding these lots into a single one point one one acre property will allow the applicant to develop a new nine thousand sixty-three square foot single story office building with associated site development. Uh, this property was rezoned PCD in September of twenty, twenty twenty-one and received site plan approval from the commission on September fourteenth, twenty twenty-three. So with that, staff recommend approval of this binding law combination.
Questions from the commission? Any comments from any of the neighbors since this has progressed?
No, we, we actually held two community meetings for this project. The first one back with the rezoning in twenty twenty-one and the second one for the, the site plan in twenty-three. And both times, uh, a few neighbors came out, mostly they were just curious and they all came away pretty supportive of the project.
We need a motion.
Motion to approve binding law agreement for thirty-five and forty-one West Morgan Street and six nine six five, ninety-one and nine nine five Vinland Road.
Okay, we have a motion and we have a second.
Second.
We have a motion, we have a second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed, motion carried unanimously.
That's.
Recommendation to approve final plan for seven twenty-one and seven oh five, Vinland Road.
Thank you. This is a, uh, request for final plot approval for the Winter Grove subdivisions located at seven twenty-one and seven oh five Winter Garden Vinland Road and one fifteen River Road. The thirty-one acre property was rezoned to PUD in twenty twenty-two and received preliminary platte approval in January of twenty twenty-three. The applicant is proposing to platte the property with eighty-seven new residential lots with common area tracks and associated easements. Staff has reviewed the application and recommends approval of this final platte.
Questions?
One here, one comment. I was really annoyed, the developer came in here and just tore out all the trees. There was an agreement that they were not supposed to do that. They did do that and chose to do the damage and pay the fine rather than, than follow our rules. And so I think that's something that as we go forward, uh, we as a city probably need to look how we can create greater barriers for them to, to do that. So the action, the deed is done and they'll take the appropriate action, but, but yeah, just.
The way you get your attention is just up the fine enough to where it hurts.
Yeah, I would agree with you.
That's the only thing that don't listen to you.
I agree.
Cause I'm not, not all the time and yet you, you look at the trees, they're still there and you wonder six months, how many of those are gonna be gone?
Agreed.
Over time, so, yep. Okay, any other questions? We need a motion.
Motion to approve the final platte for seven twenty-one and seven oh five Winter Garden Vinland Road and one one five River Road, subject to conditions.
Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion, we have a second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed, motion carried unanimously. Recommendation to approve special event. Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. This is a request for approval of the annual Winter Garden Music Festival in downtown on Saturday, February twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-four. There will be over thirty different performances happening throughout the day. There will be around thirty different food snack type vendors along with our downtown merchants with beer and wine sales, uh, that is organized by the city. Activities will run from eleven AM to ten PM and Plant Street will be shut down for two AM Saturday morning until the event clears at approximately two AM. Closure will be from Miller Street to Park Ave, including Central Avenue. Uh, staff recommends approval of the Winter Garden Music Festival.
Questions from the commission? What's up? I was asking. There's enough challenges. Okay. Any questions? If not, we need a motion.
Motion to approve the music festival.
Okay, we have a second.
Second.
We have a motion is second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed, motion carried unanimously. Thank you, ma'am. Matters from citizens of Winter Garden.
All right, can everybody hear me?
You'll give an address, please.
Oh, uh, Lauren Cohen, I'm in Brandy Creek. Um, I wanna talk today about the, uh, the intersection improvements there. And, um, I've spoken to Jim and about, you know, being kind of talking about what's gonna happen. I gotta say that in due, in all respect, I think, uh, the three million dollars that you guys approved last meeting, I think it's probably not the best usage of the money and the project itself. Uh, I live right there and, uh, you're essentially adding three more lanes to a very tiny intersection. Now, at best, I guess Jim called it, the storage of the cars waiting is only gonna be maybe three or four per light. You're still gonna have people that are gonna back up. So at best, you're gonna make it alleviated for four people who can get into that turn lane before it jams up again. So you're always, it's not gonna solve the problem. And I know you guys, you're trying to do a good deed here, but it's not gonna solve the problem. What would have made more sense is if you paid the money to the Oakland people to make the road that they've been promising to make, okay? Or you would have saved money. I totally get making the intersection better for the kids and everything. It's a little rundown and people cut that corner of pages. But I think what should be done is a really sophisticated traffic light But I think what should be done is a really sophisticated traffic light that would make more sense than basically making all these turn lights. You've got AI traffic lights that can determine, you know, the speed, there are sensors, there's a lot of technology now. You can traffic light control where you could have saved money instead of $3 million to move utilities. You're essentially creating a six-lane parking lot now, which is what's going to happen. So here we live, my wall is cracked because of the extra traffic. I don't, it's not going to work. It's going to be, you're going to make, some people say, well, why isn't there a turn lane? But it's not going to fix the problem. We need the road over and over and out to 50. And whatever traffic light you're going to put in there, I hope it's state of the art. Because if it's just like a sensor traffic light, that isn't going to fix it either. You need to know, hey, that's a school bus or hey, this is that, so that people, it's a smart thing. If you do that, then, okay, maybe a six-lane intersection shoehorned into that tiny location won't be so bad because then people are going through there. So I think you might have wasted money, about a few million dollars. I don't know how much traffic lights cost. And I think you're creating essentially a large parking lot, which is probably not better for the kids crossing. Instead of having, you know, this, this one way down the brick road, now you can have two, four, six. That's not better. I think you guys should have thought about what's happened in terms of the building down by Lake Apokka. Everybody wants to move here. It's a great place to live, but the infrastructure is not keeping up with it. I mean, even this stuff that you guys are approving, how much time I got there?
Oh, I mean, probably over, go ahead.
I don't mean to go over, but you know, you guys are just approving. I mean, is there some semblance for the folks? I've been here for 25 years and I understand that's a terrible intersection, but come on, I mean.
I travel four times every day, so I am, it is coming, when you're coming in down plant, went around the swamp there and backed up almost to, you know, the store. Yeah, that's a concern. We hadn't spent it yet, but.
You know, that swamp on the house at the end, we have bears, we have possum, coyotes, raccoons.
You got a fox who went across in the morning at 5:30.
And it may go right through our door. But anyway, you see the problem?
Yep.
I don't think it's going to solve it.
We understand you. Matters from city attorney.
Excuse me?
Yep, there's.
Who's the mayor?
Just stand up.
Oh, okay.
I'll wait a moment. Good evening, everybody. I hope you all had a happy new year. I'm back to talk about the vote taken the last time we were all here about the forfeiture hearing charges. At our last meeting, Commissioner Bennett, Commissioner Maitreel and Attorney Artiman said that the three charges were based on the minutes that were approved in September. You guys were adamant that there were three charges based on the minutes that were approved. In fact, Commissioner Bennett said, the motion was based on the minutes and the minutes were adopted and that's why there should be three charges. So I went back and I looked at those minutes. And for those of you who don't want to have to do a public records request, we have those minutes on our site and you can just go and look at them. There's no mention of three charges in those minutes. There is mention of exactly one charge in that minute, in those minutes, and it's 14.2. So I don't understand, and that's why I'm back here, because I don't understand how you get three charges out of one section on the charter, 14.2, which is interference with staff. There's no mention of 14.1 at all, which was what was brought up at the last meeting. So you guys took a vote based on 14.2 and 14.1, but 14.1 was not mentioned in the minutes. And you took a vote based on the minutes that were approved in September. So I asked, sent an email to Attorney Artiman and to John Williams, and I asked for clarification, which I got the most obfuscating email ever based on clarity. So I'm back here asking again, is that vote null? Because I don't see how you get three charges out of one article. And I want that explained.
Thank you. I think we also said that we're going to let the attorneys handle it. So I also qualified that motion by saying if the attorney argues that it's not, then it's, then it's not. We'll listen to those arguments, so that's.
What you said, Commissioner?
And that's all I listened to. That's all I listened to. Can I answer your question? Let's, let's let this process move on.
Okay.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
Hello, I'm Christina, volunteer trapper for Pet Alliance.
Could you give your address, please?
13681 Sunset Lake Circle, Winter Garden, Florida, 34787. It all started with an email. On March 18th, 2022, I sent an email to Ron Mueller, City Commissioner, District 2. I introduced myself as a volunteer trap, neuter, vaccinate, return trapper with Pet Alliance Community Cat Initiative. I was feeling discouraged because I felt no support for our little voiceless kitties. I felt overwhelmed. A lot of kitties and people needed assistance and I couldn't do it all. Ron replied, assuring me that the Winter Garden government and its city commissioners do care and that $50,000 had been put into the city budget to help stray cats. Hearing that, I thought, wouldn't that be fantastic if Pet Alliance and the city of Winter Garden could somehow partner up? It took some time to coordinate, but a meeting was scheduled and canceled by a hurricane. But no one gave up. Fast forward over a year later to the summer of 2023, a partnership was announced. I was so happy. The public is supporting us 100%. Our first Winter Garden trapping project was June 9th, 2023. We finished last year with over 300 cats. T and R. That would take me over three years to do without this partnership. In addition, many friendly cats and kittens have been fostered and placed in their forever homes. Alas, there are not enough homes for all kittens born outside. When you consider one unspayed female can have two to three litters a year and those litters have litters before the end of the same year, that's a lot of heartache. But with this partnership, we are making a difference. Today, I am so proud to be part of Winter Garden. I am no longer feeling discouraged. Instead, I brag to everyone in Orange County and beyond how the city of Winter Garden loves its animals. Winter Garden has set an example that I hope other cities will follow. And as a small token of my appreciation, I have these cat cats to present to you all.
I can tell you, I appreciate it.
Cat mom, cat parent. Please be sure Amy gets one also.
And Chris, we were festivals, I didn't know you were going to speak on that tonight, but thank you so much for all that you do. It's a great partnership. I know you guys have called me from Cats and Trees to trying to get on people's property and work things out. And it's that and, you know, I certainly want to thank the commissioners for supporting that in the budget. And Mr. Williams will pitch up a spot here because he himself really lead this effort and getting going here. So it's a teamwork.
We also need to recognize Amy because she's kind of spearheaded it from our offices.
This is true. I'm sorry, Amy. Yes, thank you so much as well. So.
All time coming. Nice job. Thank you very much. All right, good work.
Gretchen Tope, 512 North Lakeview Avenue, Winter Garden. I did not realize that Christina was going to do this presentation. I probably was the last one this year on Lakeview anyway. I had one mom. My daughter had the dad, but he followed Bob home one day and he lives in our neighborhood now.
A smart cat.
And the mom has had her third litter. And thanks to your help with the Pet Alliance, all of one, I caught eight, seven of eight, including the mother, hooray, and the father, and one baby escaped. Six were in the car, she was on her way home. I said, I got the lad, I got the daddy. And she turned right around and came back and picked him up. Thank you all. Somewhat known as the new calf lady of Winter Garden because when I walk the dog, the cats all fall in that. Thanks so much. It has been wonderful.
This is a problem I have to say. We appreciate it. Matters from our city attorneys.
Just one, Mayor, commissioners, just last meeting, the commission, I think, wanted to think about how to deal with this potential hearing. We have thrown it out and looking for direction. I did provide to John a much more simplified hearing if you choose to move forward with that. If you do, it's a much less structured, but I still think needs to be a little bit of process requirements that, for the process and for commissioner Newell. So it's up to you how you will proceed.
So we're going to object to the conversation since I still don't have representation to engage yet. So.
You haven't gotten an attorney yet?
No, unfortunately.
Been what, three months?
Do, I guess, the question is, do we need to wait until he has one?
It's completely up to the discretion of the commission at this point. Is the commission's decision?
I would say that I would be prepared to move forward if he wasn't represented. I don't think it'd be fair for Ron and I think it could be, whatever we came up with could be questioned if he wasn't represented. I think he needs an attorney.
So do we put a timeline on that? Because the allegations have happened during this tenure of office and there's no guarantee who's going to hold the office, you know, after the election time. I feel like it needs to be addressed during this term. I mean, it shouldn't be open ended as far as reporting time.
Yeah, I agree, Lisa. I just don't, and I don't know if this is the time to discuss it. Feel free to stop me if you want to stop me. I just don't see how this is going to happen. And I don't want to leave this to my successor either. I really don't. It's valuable how that may even affect the proceedings. But how, you know, if Ron gets an attorney, how do we, you know, he's going to want discovery and there's going to be time. And if I was that attorney, I'd want to ask for a lot of information and it's only fair that he's going to get that, that time. So I just don't see how we, how we get this done. If you can explain it to me and we can do it, great. But I, that's my, I should say, that's my concern. So, Lisa, look, I guess, we used to swear in the new commission in the next meeting after. I think that changed last charter. Was it a couple of meetings after now before we switched to the new commissioners?
If we have to, sir, for questioning.
So, so he may or may not be here after the election.
So if we try to fare and go with the more lax procedure, which I think is there as well, does that make a difference?
I think you can proceed either way. Or alternatively, you're not stuck with just what I suggested. It's really up to the commission, you all, the judge of qualifications and whether forfeiture, whether what occurred constituted a violation of the charter and then the separate vote, if you did find there was, then a forfeiture. But it's really up to you all. That's the commission to decide if you will proceed or if you don't, or if you want to postpone it or what have you. But it's a, I think, I think the issue though, if you're going to proceed, it'll be done during the current term. I mean, if you're, if you wait, then there's beyond the current term creates some issues potentially. So that's my, that's my bubble.
So I'll just, again, object to bringing this up without representation. I don't cast anyone to guide me on what to say and what's appropriate here or even this conversation legal. And it certainly has cost us a ton of money for Commissioner Bennett's personal agility here, which is just a huge waste of time, spare time and money here. It's embarrassing to us to know men as a city. But, you know, I do want to structure this. I did not know Mrs. Torquemus was going to say what she said, but, you know, for those of you who have been called September 14th, Commissioner Bennett made effectively some false allegations that I had threatened to fire city employees and wanted a hearing on the matter and wanted those emails and Commissioner Sharman before he seconded that motion, ask if I was clean on that and I, the firm that it runs. And while I think that the emails that were provided to you were overly broad, it was not in scope of what Commissioner Bennett asked for, there's absolutely no evidence in any of those emails whatsoever, if you've read through all of them. Never threatened to fire a city employee or threaten your job or threaten to terminate any way. And that was the nexus that we asked. That was what was brought forth. So, you know, we certainly done every effort to try to find law firm. I can't go into the details here. Mr. Artiman is aware of some of the challenges that have been presented that we are not going to discuss. But that certainly was an noble effort to try, but at this point, as Commissioner Maitreel has said, that once I obtain legal counsel, the time for that is going to take a while for that attorney to do. I can't speak for what an attorney would do, a non-attorney, I have no idea of it. I would imagine he's just like a walk and say, okay, well, we'll do this a week. So, you know, at this point, given there's an utter lack of evidence that was provided to you, nothing here, so if I ever do that, I would move and dismiss the hearing.
Well, Ron, I guess I look at it a little bit different than your synopsis. There was a tremendous amount of emails. I mean, if all five of us sent that to our staff, we'd have to have three extra people just to go through emails. And a lot of them were sent to different department heads, copied to our city manager, vice versa, which is you really shouldn't be doing, you go through the city manager. And what I hang a hat back on is, I want to say it was probably May of 2022. I think our city manager sent an email saying, hey, you got to send everything through me. And from what I remember reading was, you know, respectfully declined and continued on. So I understand what you're saying, but it's not so much just suggesting you fire staff. It's just the whole thing, I guess, that continued on after that. And I guess that's where, you know, you know, I heard your summary of it, but that's from where I.
And I respect me, but you know, I really liked the actual original motion that she made, because even though it summarizes 14-2, actually what she said was termination employees, that didn't occur. And I think maybe it was overly broad. Certainly, you know, I also, you know, I can't really argue this, but I'll simply say that, you know, if the city manager thought it was a serious enough problem, it was affecting work, he would have brought that to force. He did not. And if, you know, look at anything from an HR perspective, you know, if there's an incident at all, you know, does that person continue to exhibit the same behavior? I think if you're on the city manager's spot, no team manager does. No, we have continued that. So my motion sits on the floor. It's the chair, where's your call second?
Hey, does anybody want a second motion?
Ron, how would you characterize your emails?
Just one second, please. If this motion, anybody want a second or not? Okay, it dived from like a second. Go ahead.
How would you characterize your emails where you insinuated that someone might be better off or if you're a different organization?
If I was speaking to the city manager?
Their emails that.
If I was speaking, I can't really answer that here, but you know, if I, any conversation I've had with city manager between me and city manager.
Any conversation you have an email is open to?
No, no, I agree with that, but I meant, you know, if I'm expressing my opinion, that's, you know, that's not, you know, I'm not discussing with an individual.
If this is hinging on my motion, I can modify my motion as far as 14-1 and 14-2 because that was my intent. Violations of charter could be addressed. But I would like to make a motion that we go ahead and schedule a hearing during this tenure of office during this term. The sooner the better so that we can have it resolved. And I believe that Mr. Mueller has been afforded more than adequate time to secure an attorney. Whether or not one chooses to pick up the case is, we can't leave it open indefinitely.
You know, I want to affirm what the mayor has said. You know, I want to say that Commissioner Bennett had every right to make the motion that she made. And she has, you know, I don't know exactly what transpired between her district and your district, but I know she bared a lot of the brunt of some of the issues that went on because her, because her district abuts your. issues that went on because her, because her district abuts yours, whatever. Again, I don't want to litigate this thing here, my whole, my whole purpose of making the motion, and I agree with a lot of things that the Mayor said, you know, because I've talked to staff, and you and I have actually talked about some of these things, and getting, getting training, and actually going, and, you know, learning about our Charter and those kinds of things. So it's, it's not at all, you know, dismissing anything that Commissioner Bennett is saying, I'm just saying that I think you should be represented, and I feel like we're litigating it here, and I don't think we should be litigating it without attorneys. And I, and I was kind of hoping we'd have our attorneys that we were retaining here also tonight, so we could hear their side. We're not attorneys, I know, I understand we have to be maybe, maybe called it the jury to make this decision on this, but we're not attorneys, and we've got to hear the arguments on both sides. So that's all we saw.
I have no problem with having representation, but I don't think we need to leave it open handedly.
I agree with this, yeah, I agree. I think I brought, is it time, and I don't know the financial position, and, you know, should we be appointing, throw that up, should we be appointing an attorney, or hiring an attorney for it? You know, I don't want to see this money spent, I don't, I think it's, but it's also a matter of fairness and representation, of due process as far as I'm concerned.
So let me give my perspective, just in general, for the law or future Commissioner, what the President emails me, whether it's blatantly too far or not, that's up to legal arguments, we hear back and forth. But I think this is a bigger issue than one Commissioner's, how we move forward as a body as Commissioners, how we act with the public, how we interact with staff, we need to spell it out, specify what is going to be the process, and then if these actions, what the, once we've heard of legal arguments, the choice of the Commission to take measures, you know, that can be little too big, that's, I think that's up to us as well, too. But until we hear both arguments on the reason why, is it, you know, we don't know how to address the punishments of...
Let's have a workshop here in the next few days and decide. I'd do this in a workshop.
I would object to a workshop without representation.
When you said to decide...
Not to decide, to discuss.
What, in my, my suggestion would be, is to the Commissioner's points, I mean, there's all, there's an issue, and, you know, how far does an email or an instruction go, and to whom it can be made, what does the Charter mean, rather than a hearing on Commissioner Mueller's emails and comments to staff and others, not make it about that, have a separate workshop with the Commission that talks about each one of those provisions in the Charter, and what they mean in practical terms, in terms of City Manager and I can be there, we can talk about what that means, and what the Commissioner does, and how they do it, and how it affects staff and the like. Ultimately, the Commission, unless the Charter's changed, will make a decision if there, if there's a case, but rather than put Commissioner Mueller and the Commission in the position of having to have this hearing on Commissioner Mueller's actions, do it outside of that and just have a full discussion. Now, so Commissioner Mueller will not be the target of that, or the Commissioner's subject to, subject to that, it would just be to try to bring clarity to this, which would then potentially result in some rules that the Commission could adopt to govern its own actions and procedures, and potentially a further suggestion to the voters of the City of Winter Garden to amend the Charter if they saw fit. But because of the issues we've got, my thought would be, I mean, the Commission has made the motion, the decision to proceed with the hearing, but you're not bound with that, you can decide not to have that hearing and do a workshop. It's an alternative that you may want to consider, may not, and that's the thought.
It's an alternative to the consequences of violating the Charter?
Yes.
And remedies spelled out in the Charter?
That, that's correct. That, that suggestion, a workshop, would not be a hearing about any Commissioners, especially Commissioner Mueller, it would just be a discussion about what happens by when a Commissioner takes certain actions, whether it's email, or direction, or communication with staff. I mean, our Charter's pretty broad, it says dealing with, it actually uses the phrase dealing with, and what does that mean? So, so, so we can talk about that and have a full discussion, and get a consensus on what the Commission believes that means generally. We think that needs clarity, we can, the Commission can give that clarity and say, look, going forward, this is what we think that means, and if a Commissioner violates that in the future, then they're on fair notice. So, so right now, we don't have any decisions by the Commission about what each one of those provisions in the Charter actually mean. That's what the hearing would be for on Commissioner Mueller, did he violate it, did he not? To Commissioner Maitre's point, he wants attorneys to argue back and forth about what that means, if Commissioner Mueller has a lawyer, and the City has a lawyer, and they present that, that's just going to be an advocacy position. Commissioner Mueller's attorney will argue it doesn't, you know, the provision of the Charter that's an issue, does not, is not violating, and the City's prosecutor or presenting attorney would argue, well, it does violate. So that doesn't get you really where you may want to be.
Yeah, that's not exactly what I was...
So if you don't want that, then you, I mean, it would, it would probably require setting aside the hearing of Commissioner Mueller, but what you, what you've already decided to do, but you're not required, if all, to continue that. And it's perfectly logical and appropriate if you decide not to, because of what you learned over the last two months. Of course, you certainly can proceed, and that's the direction you've given, so you've got options, I think, that feel like your hands are tied, and you have to do X, Y, or Z. It sounds like you've got a lot of issues and questions, both about the procedure, or what some of these things mean, and we'd rather not, potentially not rather deal with that in a hearing on Commissioner Mueller, as to whether he violated the Charter, or you just want to talk it out and get your interpretations and/or potential rules, and write a Charter amendment submitted to the voters. Anyway, that's, that's my take on it at this point, sorry.
All right, so if we, if we waited until after the election, Commissioner Mueller may not be here, and it would be purely a discussion on what transpired, Mayor may or may not be here, we don't know if the voters are going to sign. But if he, just to say the scenario, he was not reelected, and would we hold a hearing, or would he be making sense to do it at that point?
Well, I, it's a good, good point, so, so if you have a workshop to talk about it, it doesn't pertain to Commissioner Mueller. It's about what that Charter means, what you as a Commission believe it means, and whether you think there needs to be further clarity. It wouldn't be about whether Commissioner Mueller is reelected or not, would be an irrelevant matter.
Well, sidebar to that, I like that workshop idea, but I'm saying, just in general, if, with the motion that Lisa made, that we ought to do a hearing, what are the pros and cons for doing it before or after the election?
The workshop?
No.
With a hearing?
The hearing.
Well, I think there's a question.
I like the workshop.
I mean, the Charter provides for forfeiture, if you determine a violation, it provides for the opportunity for the Commission to determine forfeiture that has occurred at that office. So the office is, you know, I haven't researched this entirely, but the way I perceive it would be for this term, if the voters reelect Ron as the Commissioner for that district, then, then what occurred in the past during his term, his first term, could be, could be argued well that, you know, your action in a, after, in his term doesn't really apply to apply to his last term, but that term ended. So, so I don't know that you can have a hearing and find a determination, I'm just not sure what effect, whether you'd have authority then to find a forfeiture if there was a determination that there had been a violation of the Commission.
Is our only choice, forfeiture, no forfeiture?
No.
Or is there a lesser?
No, he can do pretty much.
Yeah, I mean, the Charter says, take three votes to declare a forfeiture of office. It's silent as to everything else.
So for all intents and purposes, the punishment could be, you're right a thousand times, I will not do emails about the City Manager?
Not sure it's enforceable, but the, I would send that via email to you.
Take that to you. Yeah, I want to reiterate, I don't see, and again, I'm not a lawyer, that's why I'd like the lawyers to discuss this, and again, I am not excusing any of the things that Commissioner Mueller did, I understand why Lisa's upset, I respect her for her motion, I don't see how we get this before the election. If we got an attorney for Commissioner Mueller tomorrow, how would he, or she have that time for that discovery and get all this done in four weeks? Or four weeks, I should say, or two months? So, anyway, that's, that's my thing, and we're going to spend a lot of money, a lot of time doing this, that's, that's all I'm saying. I'm just trying to grab, I've been in a lot of legal issues myself, being in the real estate business, and I see, I see other stuff that gets dragged out, and I don't see how it gets done, what we consider legitimate.
So to Kurt's workshop idea, I think that is a good idea for us to get some clarity.
And there's more clarity at the, at the workshop?
Yeah. So I would move that we set a workshop, do it and discuss the time and date. Do you want to do it before or after the next meeting?
I was back to another question, yes.
Ma'am, we have a motion on the floor.
Oh, I didn't listen until we...
I didn't say that, Colin, I was thinking...
You want a second, just so we can discuss it?
Who has a motion?
Lisa has a motion.
Oh, I didn't know Lisa, sorry.
Sorry, Lisa.
Way back when, I said we need to do it now during this term.
So Lisa has a motion on the floor that we need to do it during this term?
So for purposes of discussion, I'll second it.
Okay.
But I will tell you that I want to have the workshop first before I make a final decision, so on that. I think that's the, Legal Counsel's given us a recommendation, get some clarity on that, and we can go through our book of emails again after that clarity, and then we can make a decision after that, in my opinion.
Obviously, I'll object, because again, I don't have representation, and you're trying to box in a time window for an attorney to come in here and try to represent me without proper discovery, and it doesn't matter what you need to do, you have to have them like this, this is a voting board, and it may be a question, this goes into a lawsuit and we challenge, and we certainly don't want to do that, that is not what we want to do.
So, so one of the issues there is, my suggestion, I mean, you could certainly go forward with both, but, but if this motion that Commissioner Bennett, you seconded, passes, then, then it does create some more issues. It seems to me that if you either withdraw a motion and you don't move forward with that, and you just do a workshop, that does not prevent you from going forward with a hearing. In other words, you don't have to force the Commission to decide on a hearing now.
So can I have a second?
Sure.
All right.
So, so, so the thought would be if you move forward with a workshop, and after the workshop, the Commission says, we got to have this hearing, you can proceed, there's nothing to stop that. I mean, I mean, Commissioner Maitre and Commissioner Mueller are saying, you know, there's not enough time, and there may not be to do a hearing that term, but from a due process standpoint, but just because, I mean, it doesn't mean you can't, you could go ahead and set the hearing for, you know, two days from now if you want, regardless, right? It's just a matter of how you all proceed, but my thought would be, if you have the workshop, you can, you can really vet a lot of what's in the Charter, and John can present to you all kinds of different scenarios, not just with Commissioner Mueller, but scenarios like, you know, how does he have to deal with staff, how does staff react, what the practical impacts of certain types of emails and communications are, so that's one way to move forward.
And we can do that before we spend a lot of money on...
That's right.
Anything else?
That's right.
I agree. And by that, we want to qualify, when I say, it's just my opinion, that I think we're not going to be able to get this done before the election cycle. It could, possibly it could, but it's just my, it's purely my opinion.
I think you do go the legal representation route, or do you guys...
Say it again.
If you go with the legal representation, both of us with attorneys, I don't think you have a proverbial snowball's chance of it being done in the next month or six weeks.
Well, then, I...
I just...
I agree.
I, I just, we all know what that would tell, so the only other way is you go without representation and make a decision in deciding. So those are, what I see as the two options.
So we're deciding on a workshop then?
Would you make your motion now, I'll second it?
So what?
Now we can discuss when?
Did we, the other motion was withdrawn, is that what I heard now?
Died for lack of a second, sir.
So now we're looking at a workshop?
I will make a motion that we hold workshop.
Look at it, because it needs to be sent in later.
Is that a second?
I would.
You have a second, is that your second, or are we...
No, I try not to second anything, unless I have to.
I'll second.
Okay. All in favor, sing, I oppose. Okay, when can y'all, is Happy New Year's?
No, it's on your...
Or the day? Because maybe your days are easier than your evenings.
Depends on the day.
Yeah.
I'm out of town until 17:00. For next week. 18th through 19th, March 15th.
Okay.
Can you do it in the morning?
Thursday morning? Yes, yes, I will be fine.
Let's see if anybody else can do it Thursday morning?
Good, a Tri-County election.
I'm not married, so we never...
Okay.
I can do, I can do it Thursday, anytime.
Okay. I'm at the five.
Rephrase that. We're going to hold business hours.
Move, Dave? Nine o'clock?
We can do a discussion, Ron, are you available then?
I'm going to be available to the little board for this hearing, for this workshop, although I will continue to seek representation, to be present during that, so I understand what's being discussed, if I can find someone, that's all I can do to agree.
So the 18th, at nine o'clock, does that work for everybody?
Yes.
Yes.
So I should go make it 9:30, Mayor, I'm going to get blood at 8:30?
9:30, can I?
All right.
Who would you give your blood?
9:30 a.m.?
Yes.
Yeah, it's definitely eight.
One clarify for the round.
I can't do this.
That's it, Mayor, sorry.
Same, Mayor.
Yes, sir, Happy New Year to everybody, hope your New Year's off to a good start. Also want to remind everybody that we have the Martin Luther King Jr. Community Celebration on Monday, January 15th, starting at 11:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m., so hopefully we can see everybody there. And continuing with our commitment to utilize technology to assist our police department and police and efforts, I'm going to ask Chief Graham to come up and talk about some new technology that we have just made available for reporting crimes to the... So with that, turn to Chief Graham.
Good evening, Mayor Commissioners. I'm happy to present, we are now able to take anonymous crime-fighting tool for our residents and employ it. Residents can now submit anonymous, non-emergency 911 tips to the police department through a technology, a crime-fighting tool, Winter Garden PD tip 411. Pretty simple, it's actually, you download the free Winter Garden PD app from the Apple Store or Google Play to your personal device. Residents can also sign up to receive public safety alerts through the app. You can submit anonymous tips via text message to the Winter Garden Police Department by texting the keyword WGPD and your tip 847411, or submit the tip through Winter Garden Police Department's website, WGPD.com, or the City's website, CWGDN.com, and that'll be live on the 22nd. The technology utilizes a third party to protect identity and contact information, keeping tips anonymous. The tip 411 service is strictly for non-emergency use... The tip 411 service is strictly for non-emergency use. We still want you to contact 911 if it's an in-progress call. But this will allow residents to basically notify us if they see something that we need to know about. They don't want to be seen talking to the police, they can anonymously present it, and we can interact back through them, which is actually a benefit because Crime Line, which has also been a benefit for us and still enacting, but we can't contact directly the tipster. But this program, we can. We can also shove out alerts to those subscribers that want to have the alerts sent to them, and we can do that as well. So we think it will be a benefit for residents and us. Would you be happy to answer any questions?
Questions from the commission?
He's attacked.
Thank us, Larry.
I didn't know that.
This is, this is...
Very well, thank you, chief.
This is no question.
Thank you, chief. Appreciate it. Back to further. Commissioner Sharman?
I have a nightmare. Nothing's set. Commissioner, I have a few things. I promise I'll do them in two minutes. First of all, I want to thank staff. I'm sure you've been thanked by many others for all the holidays. It was fantastic. I had family in town. And it's just, I know we've already done this, but I have to say again, it's just been fantastic. I've got lots of great compliments. It's amazing. Goes to the presentation that was made for the issue with the cats, the special projects that we do, and the things that the city does, does not get done. I talked to folks in other cities, those things just don't happen in other cities. I want to thank staff for that. We really appreciate their support. I want to bring up three items, not to bring everybody down, but the kind of my hit list for 2024. And I want to bring them up just to let commission know that this is in no way implying that staff is not doing their job or complaining. We are working with staff. They are working on these things. We've had great conversations, but I just want to bring it to attention to the commission. One of the things is crime. You watch Nextdoor, you see that crime seems like it's up. I know stats are probably down, but we're being informed of them. You get the texts, you see what has happened. There's been some gang activity, things like that. City manager and I have been talking along with chief, and we have some plans in place and some solutions. And I really appreciate that that's what's going on there. And we need to do this, it's going to happen for all of Winter Garden. And I will say that I've got an increased amount of calls from residents saying that there are things that need to be addressed. I know we are concerned, and I know we're always concerned about over policing, but we also have had concerns from residents that we don't want to under-police. Not that we are, but that we want to see things get better, and we want to see some progress. So we've been talking, and some great solutions on the horizon. I just want the commission to know that we're talking about it. Along with that, some of the code enforcement issues, city manager and I have been talking about that as well. And I think one of the things we want to do is start enforcing some of the code enforcement issues that are going on, and not in a heavy-handed way, but do it and try to assist people to help them improve their properties if there are issues there. And that also goes for commercial. I am seeing some things in the commercial realm, some commercial things, and mania, up the snuff. I know what happens with these commercial plazas. They get turned over time after time, and they change hands five or six times, and they cut costs and cut costs. Actually, the landscape is slipping, and the painting is slipping. So I just want to make sure that we're staying on top of that as well. And again, the city and I have talked about this, and we do have programs for that. The other thing that is kind of interesting, I've gotten more calls about this, maybe because I've lived in Westfield, is noise complaints. Seems to be on the rise. One of the things that's happening is these cars that are coming off the line, they're coming from the factory, but they have track load. So they have these loud exhausts. I can see a lot of people nodding their head. And I have been reading, it's becoming more and more prominent in other cities and towns. They're using technology and cameras, just like speed cameras, to ticket people or at least send a warning that they're motorcycles too loud. I was sitting out at the French Cafe. Some guy comes by in his Harley, revs his engine at the stop sign. Everybody jumped out of their skin. I mean, it happened to be over 100 decibels. So I know these cars, and then same thing happened with Mustang. I guarantee you had it in track mode, and it was way too loud. So I was hoping we can start doing something with this, because I am getting some phone calls. I have the 429. I actually have the Turnpike and the 429. So if a loud motorcycle goes, and it's a mile or two away, if a loud motorcycle goes around, I hear it for about three minutes. It goes for about five miles. So, you know, maybe there's things we can start doing. I know the Turnpike Authority initiative, I've talked to Sheriff Mead about it also. They're starting to crack down on some of these noise issues. So that is some of the things that I'm looking at. Even though my tenure here is short, even beyond that, I want to pay attention to those issues. That's all I have. Thank you.
Those issues, I think, are very important. We have, someone's pretty frustrated with the mission, but I'm pretty sure they aren't. The rest of the commission, yeah, we will carry out for you.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Commissioner Mueller? A couple of things. Again, Happy New Year to everyone. And all of you that worked so hard at the light-up this year. I've got so many compliments that I just want to pass on to you, that it was, every year, somehow it gets better. I don't know how you do that, but it does. And this year was really popular. I think the extra trees and stuff by City Hall was really beautiful. The projector looked great. So nice job there. I always believe in the power of the press, and I got to call out to the people in the press before for doing good work tonight. Noreen Dorkin, I just wanted to catch up with you from Box Populi. You wrote your story on media rules, which the New York Times picked up as a local news worthy to read from 2023. So congratulations on making it New York Times. There you go. Good job. As we approach, like, history month, the art looks beautiful out there. So to all the artists that hung up in our gallery, it looks great as we kick it off. It's a great way to start. Christine, congratulations for the cat thing that was touching. Thank you. It's the fact that we saved over 300 cats, already and untold kittens. Even though I think you dumped a couple of them in my house, I'm not going to say anything about that because I just incorporated them. Then earlier, I touched on Mr. Monahan and Mr. Pash just coming to the rescue when we had a significant event where someone essentially dumped a turkey fire full of grease into the sewer system and literally plugged it up. And they were there immediately. So thank you, city manager. Thank you for that. One thing to do, in huge respect to our police and fire department, they do such a great job. But I also would be remiss if we didn't recognize our water and sewer and trash people because, you know, at the end of the day, that's what keeps us from disease and just, you know, the loss of value. Those people work really hard. And then that night that it happened, they're there in a really horrible situation trying to clean that up and get that pump back online, get that sewer cleaned. So every man who cover your open, it just is a multiplication of roaches in each one. So, yeah, each of those people have to be there if your skin just crawled. It's really gross. The annexation tonight was good. I hope we continue on that, the annexation of roads. I really want to thank the city manager. He is continuing to lead that effort. It's really important to us to have a voice in what happens in the future. You're doing a really good job working with the county. Obviously, I want it to happen faster, but it's going really well there. And then also, of course, we've had a couple neighborhoods where they were owning it, goods. We have children move in. Thank you for all the signs you put up recently. And mine, drivers and delivery people slow down. That's very much appreciated, especially in Valencia shores. One day, I ask them, one day, the next day they rock, so. That was incredible. And then last but not least, talking just quickly on the agricultural zoning. I know that we, you were impressed at the last meeting, but, you know, there is a desire to see if we can do something like that, sort of no rules, but just understand that I think Commissioner Bennett, Commissioner Sharman also have some advantages if we can find something that will work and add, so.
That's all I have. Commissioner Bennett? Just want to thank all the city employees, all the work that they did for the whole Christmas season. We drove through town on Christmas night, and there wasn't a store open, but the place was packed. Taking pictures, walking, enjoying. Some people were dressed up, others in pajamas, having a good time. So it is appreciated. So thank you for all the hours that y'all put in and all the work that you did. And with that, we will adjourn.